Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of June 26, 2024. At this time, I'd ask everyone if we could please rise so that we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that we all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. So I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media and that our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, July 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in this building. Moving along to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. I read that.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, I just did.
Sorry.
No problem. Moving forward to tonight's public hearing portion of the hearing, of the meeting, I should say, is variance case ZAV 24-2, which was continued from May 8th of 2024. It's a, the petitioner in this case is James Lemieux, also the owner of the property. The representative is attorney Michael McVeigh. The subject property is located at 96 Bryant Street, and in this case, for our viewers at home, the petitioner is seeking a variance for lot area and frontage relief in order to construct a single-family residence. So I know that this gentleman, if you recall, this was a case in which it was an undersized lot, which is something that we've, we've had some concern about on numerous occasions, not just on this matter. But I know that there was some proposal that was suggested, I believe by you, Mr. Shuba, about potentially exploring, re-dividing lot lines with a family member that had joined the property that could probably bring it into compliance. We haven't heard from the petitioner, we haven't seen any plans, but at this time, I'm going to call upon Attorney McVeigh to come forth and provide us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board, for having me. Mike McVeigh from Marquinhaw Walsh, New Bedford. Just to answer your question directly, let's talk to the client about that option. That's a non-starter for a number of factors. Also, in, on my own time, looked into maybe potentially the diocese of Fall River for a number of different factors, that's also not going to be an option.
What is?
He's, one of his abutters to the south is the diocese of Fall River.
So I've, I've looked at this, and I'm sure my members have. And the thing is, is this case bothers me a bit because it's certainly a unique one. This is not something in which someone recently divided or decided to divide and create an undersized lot. It clearly has the intent to preserve this over time as an undersized lot. I know that most people feel that the payment of taxes as a buildable lot should have a significant amount of weight, and unfortunately, the statute really doesn't have any significance, although from a statutory standpoint, it doesn't. But, you know, from just a layman's approach or just a feel, it just, just feels wrong. It just seems inequitable that this stuff happens. But the thing that, that's most concerning, and I, and I think it's just been raised recently again by Mr. Shuba, is that there was a determination even post the granting of the variance in 2002, a letter from the building inspector saying that the lot was a buildable lot. And to me, there's obviously some reliance, a significant amount of reliance, that would be placed on that by any property owner or any reasonable person. Now, in, in certain contexts, we always require, or the courts will require, that there be an exhaustion of all appeals or all administrative remedies first. Wondering if you considered, rather than having us render a decision as a variance, but rather appealing a determination by administrative appeal on the determination of a building inspector? Because I put a lot of weight on a prior determination, and we always, we're a board that we try to keep consistency, and we don't want to set bad precedent, so to speak. But if a building inspector has made a determination at some point, I don't know why that that still, still couldn't be relied upon. Halim, how do you, do you have any concern about that or any other?
No, I agree with you. Also, there was a zoning board of appeals variance on this too, that was never exercised. So I think, you know, in this case, it's a matter of opinion of a building inspector against another building inspector. But I think going this route at this time, maybe you can somehow avoid the variance application? And I'm not sure if we can continue this one and have him submit another application.
That's something I've been struggling with as to whether or not we would have him just withdraw this one without prejudice and then come before us if he wanted to and explore it. We also have a different building inspector, and building inspectors, as you well know, have a lot of discretion, because these things can be interpreted many different ways. I know we have a new one, I don't really know him, I've only met him once. He could have an entirely different interpretation on this. But I think that you have an avenue of an administrative appeal of a determination of a building inspector. Well, if he finds in, in your favor at that, or he has a deinterpretation that's favorable to you, then you don't even have to come before us. If he doesn't, then your reliance is on a prior letter that you're seeking an, an appeal from.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, I would be, the, the mechanism I'd be asking for here is to have Commissioner Bassett render an opinion on a previous building commissioner's letter?
Yes. And his determination, because it's my understanding, since that letter of 2002, I don't think there's been any changes in zoning for the single-residence A district.
Since 2002, I don't believe so.
No, there's not been. There's not been.
And if you had a building inspector tell you, and your client relied on that, I just feel that, you know, equities, you know, variance requirements on the statutory requirements are one thing, but when you're coming before us on a determination of a building inspector, I think, you know, equities, there's some, there's some pretty strong arguments to be made there, especially given, and I went by and I looked at this property. This is unique. You've got a, you've got a shed that's on there that looks like it's several decades old. You've got a stone wall that has an opening that clearly shows some intent from
Access.
For at least 50, positive 50, 60, maybe even 100 years ago, that there was access for this specific lot, because there's a long stone, stone wall, and these pillars that are there, you can see that they have not been touched for quite some time. So clearly, there was some intent to maintain that, and I think that some of that may have played into this building inspector's determination back in 2002.
Yeah, I'm tempted, Mr. Chair, to just ask for a vote. There's a lot of emotion behind this proposal.
Maybe, but the problem is, I don't know whether or not your clients would be happy with the vote.
Could I request a short recess?
Oh, absolutely. I'll give you another date if you want. That way, there's plenty of time to consider this. Well, I don't think, well, I can see body language, but the thing is, is that I don't think they quite understand the
Complexity.
Well, complexity is one thing, but it's also the significance that a determination by this board to be favorable to your client, that it's going to have on the town, it's not just him on this, this, this is the town. This is, this is certainly a pivot. If we were to grant something like this at, on a statutory requirement level, if you understand what I mean, right, on a statutory requirement level, that's a very significant pivot of where this board has been for over a decade. And if you need time to think about it, I would strongly advise that you, you, you given that time.
You know, part of the presentation this, tonight was going to be, I just strongly disagree with this precedent theme that I hear. I understand, I respect it, I understand it. I, you know, I, I would challenge the idea that there's a litany, there's a legion of cases ready to, for the door to be broken down. I'd, I'd respectfully request a, a two-minute recess to speak with my client.
I'll give you longer than that. We'll move on to the next case. How's that?
Perfect. I'm on, I'm on the, for the third case, just to be
You're the third, that's right. We'll move on to the next one. All right? I'll give you ample opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
You have to either, you have to close it and then reopen it, huh?
Well, I don't have to close it.
Or you're going to open another case?
That is true. So we can continue it, we can just agree to continue it just for a few moments, give him an opportunity.
Right, yeah. So we don't have to over, take a recess for five minutes. Sure.
Fair enough. You want me to take a break? We'll give you a break. I was going to move on, but Halim feels that we, we need to move
Either we need to close it or reopen it.
Well, we're just giving him an opportunity. I didn't
I know, but we can close it now and reopen it after, but five minutes is not going to make a difference.
No, but I want to give him ample opportunity, I just
I agree, I mean, it's, it's an option. Right? You agree? I mean, there's two different determinations from two different location.
Was that letter 2002? Did I read that correctly?
It was right, it was wrong.
I did. Excuse me. I haven't discussed it with anybody. Huh? We're just being reminded that we have to make sure whatever we discuss is on the record, okay?
Well, we're not discussing this case.
Yes, 2002. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. My eyes say
I said there was two, two times, two letters.
Was it two? I already read
He said, he said there were three letters. I don't know why.
You're welcome. Yes?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we respectfully withdraw our application.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Oh, yes. Secretary is reminding me here that there was an additional letter that was submitted, and I'd like to read it into the record. It stated June 18th, and it's addressed to the Board of Appeals, and it says, "I have been the property owner at 106 Bryant Lane, North Dartmouth, Mass. since 1988. I support James Lemieux, owner of 96 Bryant Lane, North Dartmouth, Mass., to obtain a variance on his property so that his lot may be sold as a buildable lot. Thomas Lemieux gifted his son, James Lemieux, this lot so that he would be able to use this land as a buildable lot someday. This has always been a family neighborhood, and I would like to see this continue. We need more homes for families who want to raise their children in Dartmouth, and I would like to see James Lemieux's lot be used for a family to build their forever home. Signed, Michelle Anderson." So we're going to enter that into the record. So, gentlemen, at this point, would we entertain a motion to allow them, the petitioner, to withdraw the matter without prejudice?
Sure. I make a motion.
You have, you have counsel.
I just want to make sure that I'm of the proper understanding of what's going on here. So if I withdraw this, my attorney is going to speak with the current building inspector, and if he agrees with the building inspector from when I had it as an approved lot, then we're all good here.
That's correct. And if he doesn't agree, if he, if the new building inspector doesn't agree with that determination, and that's within his discretion. I'm not telling him to come out one way or the other, that's his discretion. If he doesn't, your other avenue, and you have a count, you have attorney that can explain this to you, but there's another procedure called an administrative appeal. And that's something you can bring to us, and then we, as a board, would make a determination as to whether or not we would endorse the building inspector's determination of 2002 or not. And this is only my, this is only my suggestion. I only speak for myself. We have two other members on this board who are, you know, who have their own opinions on this.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make
And also, may I?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And also, even the worst case, when you withdraw the application without prejudice, it doesn't put a timeline on when you can reapply again. Doesn't mean that you cannot reapply for zoning.
I understand that, but you have to understand also that, I mean, I had to come in yesterday and pay another $450 just so I could come here.
We, we understand, sir.
I can't keep doing that.
We, we understand.
Well, I don't, hold on, let's just clarify something. I don't know where you pay $450. There's a one time, there's a one fee for this.
No, property taxes, because I couldn't come before the board once the taxes are paid again.
Well, maybe you got to come before the select board and argue that one. I can't help you with that, sir. And when, and if you can convince them, let me know so I can go complain to them too. All right.
I understand, but I mean, I'd like to get this over every
All right, I understand. All right. Thank you. So, gentlemen, back to a motion?
Sure. I make a motion that we accept the petitioner's request to withdraw variance ZAV 24-2 without prejudice. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you. All right, moving on. The next matter we have is variance case ZAV 24-6. The petitioner is Louis Fertado, also owner. The subject property is located at 23 Ruby Court, also known as map 135, Lot 43. The property is located in the single-residence A zoning district, and this case was legally advertised on June 6th and June 13th.
Take a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters list. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The, in this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance to construct a garage and needs relief for setbacks. So let me move on to the denial letter from the building inspector. All right, so let me just, a little housekeeping here. Let's put this aside. That's on that case. This is also part of it. I got it here. Excuse me? Oh, I couldn't pass that back. Here you go, Michelle. All right. I'm reading it to the record, a letter from the building department. It's dated April 29th, and it was addressed to Louis Fertado, and it's in regards to 23 Ruby Court. Says, "I have reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. You are proposing to construct a 24-by-36-foot attached garage on an existing house in a single-residence A zoning district, which does not comply with the town zoning bylaws for setbacks. A variance must be applied for and secured from the zoning board of appeals in order to proceed with your request. Your application is being denied in the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, and its appropriate or the applicable provisions are Article 7, Section 375-7.4D.4B, exemptions from setback requirements." And basically, it says, "Buildings or structures which are legally in existence prior to October 26, 1993 shall be considered to be in compliance with 374.7.4D and allowed to expand along the setback lines of the existing building or structure to a point which intersects with the existing setback line of the same building or structure." And I'm going to read on to the applicable provision, which says, "In addition, the buildings or structures must be placed a minimum of 10 feet from all other perimeter lot lines or 30 feet from a street line if the law upon which the building or structure is located was in existence prior to October 26, 1993. The benefit of this exemption is available to lots which already had buildings or structures thereon prior to October 26, 1993, and the subject property is in a single-residence A district." I think I have some comments as well from other town departments. I have a comment from the health department, which says, "The property is tied to town sewer. Conservation says that no apparent conservation issues here, and the DPW has indicated that all municipal utilities should be shown on the proposed plan to avoid conflicts with the construction of the new addition." And I've underlined here, "A stormwater review permit will be required from the, from the Department of Public Works." And there was a further comment that was had between the date in which we received this packet and today, which says that the plan should be revised to show the existing utilities servicing the property. The plan will also need to show erosion control to protect any site erosion during rain events from entering the street during construction. All right, so, given these concerns about the stormwater permit, or stormwater and erosion control, and also designation of utilities, how do you feel about moving forward, Halim?
No, we can move forward. Those, they have to show those on the building permit when they apply for a building permit. It's not going to affect the zoning.
All right, fair enough. So let's see, is there any other comments? No. So at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forward and plead their case.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm just looking to build a garage for my two vehicles. I drive a work van and a pickup truck. I do some sort of repair for elevators for a living, so I have a lot of material in and out, and that's kind of just what the reason why I want the garage for. It's a lot easier doing that than in and out of a basement.
All right, can you identify yourself, please?
My name's Louis Fertado.
Louis Fertado. And you're the owner of the property?
I am.
All right. So, now, Mr. Fertado, obviously, you understand the concern here is your proximity to the side yard setback, right?
Correct.
Is there any way that you could have constructed this garage to still accommodate the two vehicles and yet not be as encroaching in the setback area?
I don't believe I'd be able to fit both vehicles in
Excuse me, I can't, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't be able to fit both vehicles.
All right. But I think admittedly, you would say that if it was a one-car garage, you would be able to meet the setback requirements.
Correct.
All right. All right, so gentlemen, do you have any comments of the petitioner? I mean, any questions, any questions or comments for the petitioner?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Gentlemen?
No questions.
All right. All right, so I might have a couple of questions, but I'm going to reserve them for now. So this is a public hearing, so people have the opportunity. As you know, people are notified, abutters are notified of the immediate area of this hearing, so they have an opportunity to come forward if they like, to speak in favor or against. So I'm going to call upon, at this time, anyone in the audience who has, or would like to come forward and speak either in favor or against this request.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure, if you could just identify yourself, please.
Certainly. My name is Wendy Friedman, and I'm the abutter at 29 Onyx Drive with my sister, who's here, Charlotte Friedman. And we had some concerns about this proposed
I just asked, if you could just get a little closer to the microphone, because otherwise it doesn't get picked up so that the viewers at home can hear you?
Sure.
Okay.
We had some concerns about the closeness of the addition and, proposed addition in proximity to our, our property, and we wanted to be sure that this is just going to be a one-level garage and not somehow morph into an apartment of some sort or, or a home business. And so we were just hoping, the, the information we got, the, the plan didn't show, our, our concern is that the, it looks like the addition is going to be as big as what the house is there presently, and so, you know, being right next door, we were concerned about that.
What, what I can tell you is this, ma'am, what's your name again?
I'm Wendy Friedman.
Ms. Friedman. What I can tell you is that based on the plans that are submitted, and obviously, whatever approvals that we were to grant here, if we were to grant approval, would be conditioned on the plans that are presented to us. And the plans that we presented with, and I, and I understand your concern that it is wide in that respect, but it doesn't exceed the same height or the same roof line of the existing home. So the height of the garage will be the same height, if you consider the peak, the peak of the garage and the peak of the house will be at the same elevation.
It's one level.
Yes, it's one level. There's not a second level. And based on the pitch, it doesn't seem as if there's even be the ability to put anything up there, maybe just storage or something like that. That seems right to you, Mr. Shuba? If you'd like to see the plan, I'd be more than glad to hand it to you so you could take a look at it. I understand that when you get, when you receive notice of this, you don't get the entire packet that we receive, so it's limited. But you are notified that if you want to review anything, we do have a file on this here at Town Hall at the zoning office that you can review at any point in time. But I'd be more than glad to submit to you if you'd like to take a look at what the plan, this is the front elevation, what the property looks like.
Do you have something here with me that your office was kind enough to provide? I just didn't know if there was anything with
Like this?
Yes, I, yeah.
So when we, if we grant a, a, a variance in any case, we always grant it based on the plans that are submitted. So if they change the plans in any way, then they got to come back for us.
Okay.
And we can make a condition here that the garage height is not to exceed the height of the existing structure. So can we make a notation of that? That's something we, I, I'm only saying that's something we can do. I can only speak for myself.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem adding that if they were, if we were to go forward as a board and approve this, adding that as a condition. But obviously, my, my other companions here are
From our perspective, that would be wonderful.
Board members would have to agree. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Friedman?
No, I think that's it.
All right, great.
Thank you so very much.
No, thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward to speak either in favor or against the petition here of Louis Fertado for property at 23 Ruby Court? Doesn't appear to be anyone. I can report to the viewers at home. We have many people here tonight, but no one else has come forward. Do we have any other questions of this petitioner? Any concerns that we want to share with the members?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shuba?
Nothing at this, no, I'm good. I just, I just want to clarify, I don't have a clean copy of the, is it 5.6 feet?
That's what, that's what I wrote into my decision, but I needed a magnifying glass for me to see it, unfortunately. My plan was a computer version, and it was, it was rather small. But I saw that the closest distance I referred to is 5.6, 5 feet 6 inches.
Because, well, oh, that's 5.6.
Is it 5.6?
I think so.
Oh, I, I might have
Do we have a cleaner question?
5.6 in the front and 5.0 in the back.
Oh, it's 5.0? Well, I, I always reference the, the shortest of the distances.
No, I think it's 5.6 and 6.0.
Okay, 6.0. That's what I thought I saw.
Oh, is there on, on the foundation plan? Oh, wait a minute. Here it is.
I've got 5.0, I think.
I have it here, the plan, it's five, in the front of the garage, it's 6 feet, at the back corner of the garage, it's 5 foot, 6 inches.
It's 5, 6 inches? 5 feet 6 inches? Okay.
I mean, I think I have, on this plan, I think it looks the other way around. On, it's the front of the garage is 5.6, and the back is 6.0.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct. Yes, you're right. You're right.
The front 5.6, but
At least I can still read it.
It was 5.6.
All right, so, yeah, it looks like 6.0. I only refer to the shortest of the distances.
Right.
So not less than 5.6. That looks like 6 to me.
I, I think it's 5.6, that's what
No, but we're talking about the back one. That looks like 6.0.
Yeah, the back is 6.
6, okay.
I'm concerned about, no.
The front.
Yeah, okay, so just say 5.6.
5.6. Mr. Yeoman, any questions of the petitioner?
I have none.
Doctor?
I'm thankful.
All right. So, given that, we'll leave the, the public hearing open, but I will see if I've got some purported or proposed findings. Yes, if I can have those, please. Gentlemen, and when it comes to the rationale or any additional findings, I'm open to any suggestions. Don't hesitate, okay? Mr. Yeoman?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the subject property is located at 23 Ruby Court, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and is also known as Assessors Map 135, Lot 43. The property has been owned by the petitioner, Louis Sousa Fertado, since February 2021, and is in the single-residence A zoning district. The subject property is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and the dwelling was built prior to October 26, 1993. The petitioner seeks to construct a 24-foot-by-36-foot garage where the structure will be 5 feet 6 inches from the side lot line. Inches, I didn't put two lines on that.
I think it's 5.6.
5.6?
Because that's 5 feet 7 inches.
So it's 6 tenths, all right, so it's 6 tenths of the foot.
So he doesn't have to come back for another inch.
All right, so it's 5.6.
5.6 feet.
5.6 feet. Did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Where 10 feet is required.
All right.
If you want to add that.
Well, I, I put it on the next one, okay?
Oh, okay.
Petitioners seek relief from Article 7, Section 375-7.4D.4B exemption from setback requirements. Buildings or structures may be placed a minimum of 10 feet from all other perimeter lot lines or 30 feet from a street line if the lot upon which the building or structure is located was in existence prior to October 26, 1993. The board finds that the requested variance meets the statutory requirements as provided on the Mass General Law 48, Section 10. The four-pronged test, part one, is there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structural land is located? The location of the existing home in relation to the property line limits the petitioner's ability to meet current zoning setback requirements. So, is that okay?
Yeah.
Number two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. My rationale is the construction of the garage will accommodate the petitioner's needs for storage and allow them to garage their automobiles outside of the public view. That make sense?
It does.
Three, the desire relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The proposed garage is in keeping with the general character of the neighborhood. And number four, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Granting the proposed variance is in keeping with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. I know it's a restatement, but I didn't have anything else. I, I think, I think I lost some of my creativity. If you members have any creativity for me, I'm willing to accept. All right. You have to understand that you have, we have statutory requirements that we have to meet for this.
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, gentlemen. Oh, hold on one second. Oh, yes. I think one of the things that we'd like to put in this is a condition. So we have our nu, we have our usual conditions, which you have to seek approval from all of the town boards. You got to get a building permit before you can start construction, all that stuff. That's standardized language. I think we would add a condition in here that the garage, that the garage height is not to exceed the height of the existing dwelling.
Okay.
I'd add that as an additional condition to the granting of the variance. You understand that?
Yes.
Members okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and I think, you know, given the, given the proximity you have to these lot, property owners, they could also, obviously take an entirely different position to this.
Right.
And they just don't want something that's overpowering over their property.
Right.
And if it's in keeping, and I think it's a reasonable request. I think it's rather, very reasonable. All right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
For case.
On, I lost it.
ZAV 24-6.
On ZAV 24-6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we've closed the public hearing. So now we have an opportunity if we want to discuss as members, if there's anything to discuss. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve case variance ZAV 24-6 with the findings and the conditions as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on. Moving on to variance case ZAV 24-7. The petitioner is Shelley Scott. The owner is also Shelley Scott, and its subject property is located at 15 Kennedy Street, known as MAP 184 Lot 13. The property is located in a single-residence A district. It was legally advertised on June 6th and June 13th of 2024.
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. In this particular case, the petitioner is seeking a variance to construct an attached accessory apartment on an undersized lot which measures 10,019 square feet where 12,000 square feet is required. I am going to read the denial letter of the building inspector into the record. It was addressed to Michael McVay, who's the representative of the petitioner. And it says, "I've reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Attached accessory apartment on undersized lot, 10,019 square feet, variance required. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Adoptment Zoning Bylaw 375-7.2D. The single-family residence accessory apartment is located on a lot of at least 12,000 square feet. The subject property is located within the single-residence A district." We've also got some comments from other town boards. We've got a comment from the conservation, and it says, "The wetlands are over 400 feet away, no issues." Well, that's good. And we have DPW, which says, "This property is serviced by municipal water and sewer. Prior to any construction, the applicant shall submit an application for water and sewer. Prior to any construction, the applicant shall submit an application for stormwater permit review." So that's part of our standard conditions from all applicable permits from all town boards.
I agree.
Which we've been concluding for years now. All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon who's already at the, the podium, Attorney McVay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Mike McVay from Marquinhawalsh in New Bedford. I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicants, Shelley and Chris Scott. They own 15 Kennedy Street in Dartmouth, which is in the SRA district. They've owned it for 16 years, actually today. Like you said, they're seeking to have an accessory apartment built on their property, which is in allowed use under Article 7. This would be so that they can take in Shelley's elderly mother, who's here tonight, Silvia. So Article 7, like I said, provides that accessory apartments are in allowed use in SRA district as long as they meet 12, or they will meet 12 requirements. This application meets 11 of the 12 or will meet 11 of the 12. The one that it does not meet and the one that we're here for tonight is the, a variance from the lot area requirement, the, the last requirement. The Scott's lot area is just over 10,000 square feet. It was one of those lots that was laid out in 1963. It's an exact 100 by 100 rectangle. So I want to talk right, right away about the hardship. Looking at the site plan, it's a little difficult without.
Do you have, you have a bigger version of the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
You look at the site plan, and I was reviewing the site plan, you see that these contour, these elevation contour lines drop significantly. Okay? I pulled it also up on the mass mapper. So this is just an overlay which corresponds exactly with the site plan, the engineered site plan. And you see that the, the elevation drop is severe. Now, I, I'd, I'd seen this before I got a chance to visit the site. So it drops roughly 6, 7 feet and about 50 feet, which is a 12% grade. Now, just recently, I went and took a site visit and I met Chris. And I stood in the backyard and I was like, I was actually shocked at how much this, this, the backyard dropped off. So the topography is absolutely different than the zoning district in which this parcel sits in. I don't know if that, my iPhone 10 or whatever doesn't capture this appropriately, but to this point here, to about halfway down the parcel is, is a, is a 7-foot elevation drop, about 50 feet.
It's difficult to capture that on a phone.
Yeah.
But I, I'm taking, I, I can see the plan and I'm taking that your word.
So, you know, moving along to, would this literal hardship be a detriment to the client? Absolutely. In, in this case, just to get into specifics, you know, her elderly mother lives alone. She lives in a two-decker, I'm sorry, a two-story house in Warwick, Rhode Island right now. Which is, you know, travel between Dartmouth and Warwick has, has been exceptionally hard with the Washington Bridge being down. She still drives. This site plan contemplates extending the driveway to have adequate parking. And I'll, I'll jump to whatever you'd like me to, Mr. Chair.
When I saw this plan, there was an area that was, that was going to, that was an existing garage that's going to be converted into this accessory apartment area. And then there's an addition to that as well, right?
Yep.
And all of that is all in compliance with side yard setback requirements and front yard setback requirements.
I can't say that that's, that's true. This, the, this plan contemplates, it says not, this plan shows 19.7. Now, there's no, going to be no widening of any structure, if that, if that makes sense.
Well, you're continuing it on the same line.
On the same lot.
He's continuing the same, no.
On the same line.
On the same line, building, building line.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I can't, I can't stand here and say that it meets, according to this plan, it's, it's, in my opinion, de minimis, just shy of the 20-foot set, setback require, the side setback requirement. Now, when this application was put in, built for a building permit, the building commissioner simply returned a, a denial letter for only the lot area requirement. And it's been my experience that I, I will rely on what the building commissioner's denial letter says to address. I'm prepared to speak to anything, but.
I think because of the zoning district and the fact that this structure was in existence prior to 1993, he can go up to 10 feet from the property line. Is that correct?
Right, but then you have to have 30 feet for the front, right, which.
It already is in existence.
It is.
Pre-existing. The garage was already in existence, the front of the garage was up to the street line. All right, so good. All right.
All right, so, like I said, this, this, this has got a typo. This says it's a, it's a two-bedroom accessory apartment. It's not, it's, it's a one-bedroom, it's a modest, this is the actual building plan. Sorry. As you can see. So this is, this will be right. This will be the existing garage, and then there's roughly 250 square feet of new construction, if you will, that'll go towards the northwest corner.
What is the total limit for square footage you can have on, on an accessory apartment?
900. This is under, well underneath that.
801?
800. Is it 800, I'm sorry?
800, right.
Would have needed a variance for that as well.
This is 600.
He would if he had exceeded it.
Right.
Yeah.
No, he's, no, he's not over.
What are the other lot sizes in the immediate area?
They're almost completely uniform, with a couple of exceptions. Like I said, this, I have a plot plan that I, well, I found the, this is the, sorry. Well, this contour map will show you.
They're all about the same size.
They're all about the same. I think this, I can't speak to another property, but these are all relatively the same.
Some is smaller, 5 is smaller.
The other one immediate next to it is smaller.
Okay. You know, so the hardship, I think, is, is met. I, I, when I got to the site, I, I couldn't almost believe it. I think it fits, well, it fits completely appropriately in the bylaw because it calls for housing for elderly or young folks, and, and this is exactly that. They don't plan on renting it. There's more than adequate parking. She still drives, she's still independent, she is independent. You know, Mrs. Shelley works nearby at UMass. It's just the right thing for everybody.
Let's see how the neighbors feel about it. So at this point in time, I'm going to have you step back just for a minute, if you're, if you're okay with that, Mr. McVay?
Of course.
So given that this is a public hearing, I will call upon anyone in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition. But I'd ask that you come up to the podium, identify yourself, and state your address so we can understand your proximity to the project.
Hello, my name is Breon Vera, and I live at 20 Kennedy Street.
All right. This 20 in relation to this.
Across from 19, I'm diagonal from her. And I have been living there for 14 years, actually, and then before that, too. It's a family home. My parent, my grandparents built it in 1965. So, just to point out, like, I am in favor of their addition because depending on when the certain zoning laws have been edited and amended over the years. If you look at 16 Kennedy, our neighbors, well, to, to my side and across the street from Chris and Shelley, they were allowed to put a very large two-car garage because he was a retired mechanic. All right, so they had one for their car and one was a thing. But that is a huge structure. It's much bigger than the proposed plan. And it's very close to my property, which I don't have a problem with. But if, the fact that they were being denied adding this addition, when my neighbors to one side have this honking two-car garage, that is 2/3 the size of their home, plus, then if you look on the other side of my property at 24 Kennedy, I don't know if, where'd he go? Can you move the thingy for me? I just, I don't want to mess with your computer. Okay, so there I am at 20 Kennedy, and then continue up, yeah.
That's where, that's where the image ends.
Darn, okay.
Well, you can describe it to us.
So, let's just say, 24 Kennedy added an addition to their master bedroom on the northern side of their house that is just as big, if not bigger, than the addition that they are proposing. And those owners at the time, the Madeiras family, were granted their building structure as well. And none of the neighbors had a problem with that either. So I'm proposing that if it's been, what's good for the goose is good for the gander in this sense. And especially considering this isn't something just cosmetic. This is for the recently widowed, you know, mother of Shelley and, you know, for her to move in and be closer to the family in her later years. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nicely done. All right, so is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak either in favor or against this petition? If you could just identify yourself.
My name is Billy Phillips. I live at 12 Kennedy Street, and I have no problem with them.
12?
I'm sorry?
12, you said?
12 Kennedy, yes.
Okay.
I'm in favor of them putting the addition on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on up.
Hello, my name is Laura Edgcombe, and my family and I live at 23 Kennedy Street. And we are also in favor of them putting in the addition.
Thank you. I'm most concerned about 19 Kennedy Street, which is the abutter immediate to this location. Is a person from 19 Kennedy Street here? Okay.
No.
All right.
But Tom, I know Tom and Michelle.
All right, I just wanted to sit through with you.
Usually if they're not, they're here.
Yeah, I said not.
Yeah. Nope, that's fine.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request? All right, so, any questions of the petitioner? Because we can move on.
I have none.
All right, I don't have any questions either at this point in time, but we'll leave the public hearing open. I'm going to need some assistance here with, with measurements. Because I couldn't read it off the plan.
197, is that what?
All right, so, the subject property, gentlemen, here's such some suggestion findings. The subject property is located at 15 Kennedy Street, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and is also known as Assessors Map 184 Lot 13. The property has been owned by the petitioner, Shelley Scott, since June 2008 and is located in a single-residence A zoning district. The petitioner seeks relief from Dartmouth zoning bylaw 375-7.2D.31, which provides that the minimum lot area required for a parcel zone, single-residence A, to have an accessory apartment must be 12,000 square feet. The subject property contains 10,019 square feet. The petitioner is converting an existing garage measuring 24 by 36. I don't know what the square footage is on that, whatever the square footage is, we have to be like, is it there?
It says 394, that's what I see, is it?
24 by 36?
No, 24 by 36 is larger than that.
Larger than that, right?
It's 860. No, it's not 24 by 36.
What's, what's the existing garage?
It's 300 and.
24 by 36 was the other garage.
394.
That's square footage, but what's the measurements, the dimensions of the existing garage?
I don't know.
Are they on there?
If this is.
I see them, but I can't read them. Oh, there are no actual dimensions on that?
No. Well, converting an existing 394 square.
390 or 380?
394.
394, that's what I read.
All right, the petitioner is converting an existing garage consisting of 394 square feet. And proposes to construct.
An addition of 253.
Of 253 square feet to be used as an accessory apartment. I should put here to be collectively used as an accessory apartment.
Total 647.
All right, we'll do that for a total.
Of 647.
Of 647 square feet. Where's, where's their counsel? Is he, does that sound right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. The board finds that the requested variance meets the statutory requirements as provided on the Mass General Law 48, Section 10. The four-pronged test, part one, is there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structural land is located? The subdivision in which the lot is located was laid out over 60 years ago prior to the existing dimensional zoning requirements. Requiring the petitioner to comply with current zoning requirements would limit the petitioner's use of the property, thereby creating a substantial hardship. Number two.
I think I, I like the.
Topography of the.
The topography.
Well, that wasn't brought to my attention. It wasn't part of your narrative initially, was it? With the topography?[1798.25] With the topography? I didn't see it in the narrative.
It was not.
Okay. So, I don't feel so bad, then. All right, so...
The steep topography or something.
The significant slope.
Or drop in elevation.
Okay. The significant drop in elevation creates the hardship for the petitioner. Number Two. A little enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise to the petitioner. The garage has been in existence prior to the implementation of current zoning, and petitioner seeks to construct the garage with an addition to accommodate a family member as an accessory apartment. Anything else, gentlemen? Desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The external characteristics of the accessory apartment design are aesthetically pleasing and will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The intent and purpose of the bylaw is to preserve the use of the property and encourage the most appropriate use of the land in keeping with the requirements of 375-2.1. I'm open to any suggestions. The creative juices weren't flowing as well this afternoon.
Well said.
Well, thanks, but I don't have any other creativity. This is not one we've seen before. I've been on this board for almost 10 years. I've never seen one before.
No, and I was kind of concerned first because, you know, of starting in new...
A precedent, I get it.
But when I looked at the lot line, I mean, basically, in the S... In the single-residence A, you're allowed 50% of lot coverage anyway, so you're not even close to that 50%. So, if it wasn't a second apartment, if it wasn't for a second apartment, you can put that same addition without going to zoning board or anyone by right. I think you can do that.
Right.
Yeah, but...
So, one of the things that I've also come to learn recently, I haven't read it yet, but there's a new bylaw that was approved by town meeting.
I heard.
But it hasn't been... It's been submitted, I believe, to the Attorney General's Office, and they have not approved it yet. So it's not come back to the select board to be approved as a...
Is that a copy?
Yeah, this is a copy of it.
I'd like to send it to you.
So, there's gonna be some significant changes.
I'll send it to you. That's the only one I have.
Oh, yeah, just send it to me, please.
So, we're gonna have to learn this, obviously.
I know, that's why, you know...
But it hasn't been approved by the Attorney General's Office, one.
It will be.
And I'm sure it probably will be. And then it's gonna be finally approved by the zoning board... I mean, excuse me, by the select board, and then at that point, we will have a new bylaw that we have to comply with. And I'm sure it's to assist people, and it's going to create... And it's gonna expand on the usability of accessory apartments.
Well, accessory apartments are about to be allowed in any single residential unit statewide.
Statewide?
If it's in front of the Mass Senate. I think it's beginning tomorrow for a vote.
If it becomes a statute, then it's a whole different...
Dartmouth's already ahead of the game, so...
Well, we may be doing that for other reasons, but it is what it is at this point. And we can't rely on that because those changes are not applicable law at this point, or they're not valid as of yet. But, so, getting back to the task at hand, are there any other comments from any of the board members?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Is it an opportunity for us to have any additional comments as members? If we don't have any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve ZAV-24-7 with all the applicable additions, bylaws.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. One of the things I didn't read into the record was the conditions. It's the usual stipulated conditions, gotta get all board approvals and whatever else. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board.
Attorney McVeigh. All right, so, moving on.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, the next matter we have is a special permit, and unfortunately, I must announce that I have a conflict in this case, and I must recuse myself. So as a result, we're gonna go off the record just for a moment so that we can restructure the board. I believe that Halim will be serving as acting chair on this case, and we'll bring Attorney Human to... As a voting member. So if we could just go off the record just for five or 10 minutes.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals is back in session. Just so we can explain to people watching here that Attorney Maderas, who's the chairman, has a conflict with this case, and the clerk or the vice chair will be filling for his seat. He recused himself, and on this board will be myself, Attorney Human, and Mr. Gardner as the three voting members. This is the last case of tonight's hearing. It's the special permit, ZSP 24-7. The applicant is SN Elmeeda Property LLC, who also is the owner of the property, and the property is located at 1402 Tucker Road, map 167 Lot 95. It's located in the general business district and also in the Aquifer 3 overlay district. This case was advertised on June 6, 2024, and June 13, 2024. What's the pleasure of the board? The reading, the waving, the reading of the abutters list?
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters list.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we would waive the reading of the abutters list. We do have an abutters list available at the ZBA office. If anyone wishes to look at the list, they can contact Michelle at the ZBA office. In this petition, the petitioner is seeking a special permit for the proposed expansion of an existing nonconforming use to convert an existing barn into an office space slash yoga studio. And this is per Article 28, 375-28.6A1, special permit uses, and also Article 28, Section 375-28-5B8, prohibited uses, per town bylaw, Article 28, Section 375-28-77. We do have some letters on file from the different departments, and I would start with the Building Commissioner letter, which is a denial letter that was addressed to Jamie Bissonette, and this is regarding 1402 Tucker Road, and it reads, "I have reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant is seeking a special permit to use the barn for offices and for the proposed expansion of an existing nonconforming use, Section 375-28.6A1." The proposed expansion is to the impervious lot coverage above the 10% allowed. And again, it's 10% allowed because he's in the Aquifer 3 overlay district. And there was also a variance on this application that dates back to... Let me check the date. To case 2005-55, that dates back to...
2007.
2007?
Yeah.
2007, that was a variance with specific conditions, and the Building Commissioner believes that they're in violation with the conditions of that variance, which also says that the impervious cover of the existing 19.6 not to exceed 24.5%. And also, the proposed use of the barn is in direct violation of Condition 4, which says the existing barn shall not be used for office space. Also, per town bylaw, 378-28.77, when a special permit is required to the lot coverage, annual inspections of such mechanism certifying that the system is functioning properly shall be conducted by a registered professional engineer and submitted to the zoning enforcement officer no later than May 1 of each year, along with an administrative filing fee as established by the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer may modify the inspection schedule based on the results of prior inspections. To date, I have not received any annual inspection reports." And again, it says, "Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, 375-28.6, special permit uses. A, unless a protected and lawful use or an exempted use, the following shall require special permit from the Board of Appeals. One, the expansion of modification of a nonconforming use. 375-28.5B8, lot coverage above 10% or lot coverage above 2,500 square feet of any lot which ever is greater. The subject property is located in the general business district and also in the Aquifer Zone 3 district." Also, there was a comment... There was comments from the planning department, and it says, "Site plan review, PSPR 24-7, application is on hold while the ZSP application is underway." The Board of Health, they have a letter here that I might read, just maybe the first two pages, but also DPW says, "In the zoning summary and compliance table, the impervious cover required value is shown as 65% general business, with an existing impervious cover of 30.9, actual is 33.8, with 2.95% roof infiltration credit Aquifer protection bylaw, and a proposed impervious cover as 43.2%, but actual 14.92 with 6.1 roof infiltration credit Aquifer protection bylaw. Within the Aquifer Protection Zone 3, the maximum impervious cover allowed is 10% in the lot cover calculations. An increase of the maximum impervious was approved from 10 to 24.5 in 2025." So, the original application was 2025. "When did the impervious cover increase from 24.5 to 30.9?" Question mark. It's...
The decision was 2007, but they filed the application in 2005.
The original application was 2005, and then they modified the application, I think, yeah, in 2007, yeah. "It is recommended that the proposed impervious be reduced rather than increased." This is from DPW concerning the lot coverage, and we'll talk about this in greater detail once we open the public hearing. Also, we have a letter from the Board of Health, and this is from Christopher Mishod, who's the Director of Public Health, and it says, "Thank you for the opportunity for the Health Department to review the application for special permit application, ZSP, and the site plan for 1402 Tucker Road that seeks to increase impervious lot coverage from 35.9 to 48.4. While the existing lot coverage may be nonconforming, the intensity of the proposed is concerning due to efforts by the EPA and Mass DEP with the Federal Clean Water Act and Massachusetts' Surface Water Quality Standards. Most importantly is the need to protect groundwater from detrimental land uses and to ensure adequate supply and safe drinking water from our downstream public water supply wells. Stormwater has not been the focus of the Health Department since the comprehensive rewrite of the Aquifer Protect Overlay District bylaw around 2003. However, emerging concerns with environmental and sanitary water quality have brought those issues back to the forefront. Within the town of Dartmouth, our watershed's to several impaired or degraded estuaries or embayments, namely the Slocom River and Westport River. The documentation of the impairment is made by Mass DEP and approved by EPA. With each approval, designating a total maximum daily load, TMDL, for the load creating impairment Sources of nitrogen in watershed may vary, and each report provide a breakdown of the controllable nitrogen." So basically, I mean, this is very concerning. I wouldn't go with this is... Read the whole... Unless you want me to, but basically, I understand that they have concerns about the watershed they're in and about the stormwater expansion, and this is now... They're back in control, kind of, what goes on within the Aquifer, and they wanna have... Make sure that this is not gonna have any adverse effect on the drinking water in the The lot coverage seems to be alarming from comments we got from the Board of Health and also from DPW Engineering. Also, what we have... I don't believe we have any more comments, correct, Michelle, from other departments. So, at this time, I would ask the applicant to present the case and maybe explain in details what his proposal is for.
Good evening. Tom Morris with Zenith Consulting Engineers. So, to get into the existing and the proposed conditions of this, as you stated, there was a previous variance to allow an increase in impervious coverage. We're aware that it is beyond what was previously approved, and if a further variance isn't granted what we're asking for, I'm not sure exactly what that will mean, but we'll get there when we get there. So, right now, they have a split entrance up front, coming into a paved parking lot with the building up front, which is a salon, salon L. There's an existing barn in the back, which the previous decision said cannot be used for office space. Right now, it's not used as anything. I don't know if you're familiar with the site, but it's rather dilapidated. So, with the expansion, the previous expansion, they put in some stormwater controls. There are two catch basins here in the middle of the parking lot. They are fitted with storm scepter water quality units. They come to a drain manhole and then into a subsurface leaching field. The rest of the surrounding sites, some of the lawn area in the back, the barn, and then surrounding sites, all drained to a low point here on the back of the site, where it just kind of naturally infiltrates. That's about it on the existing. So what we are proposing is to convert this barn into office space and a yoga studio on the second floor. Obviously, the additional uses require more parking, which is why we're expanding the parking lot. Additionally, the flow of the site, including the entrance point, is kind of being reworked because I don't know if you've been there, but it's kind of tight, especially at the entrance where it's split. They're very narrow. It's difficult even for... We have a Tacoma that we pulled into to go do an inspection on the site, and it was rather difficult to get in. So this reconfiguration will certainly help with that. Provisions are being made to allow some additional green space, landscape space behind the building here. We're removing a portion of this pavement, pulling it away from the abutters to the north. Obviously, we're expanding the total footprint, but we're just trying to rework it so that it makes more sense. So with the additional pavement, we're providing... We're removing the existing drainage field and replacing it with a new field and an open basin. So the existing storm scepter catch basins are remaining. They will be fed into the existing manhole will stay, and it'll come into a new subsurface drainage field, which is considerably larger than what's there now. And a portion of... So from about here, almost the entire new area of pavement pitches toward the back to a new catch basin back here, which comes into a forbey and an infiltration basin. So I know it was brought up that the additional impervious area... So I know it was brought up that the additional impervious area is a concern in the aquifer protection district to make sure that drinking water is not negatively affected. Specifically, one of the things that they worry about in the drinking water is nitrogen. Typically, you're not going to get that off of pavement. That's gonna come from septic flow, which obviously we're on town sewer, so we won't have that and fertilizer, which it seems kind of a, a strange thing to say, but adding the impervious coverage will reduce the potential for nitrogen loading because there's less green area to fertilize. But in addition to that, the, the treatment that's existing with the storm scepter units and then added with the infiltration basin will not negatively impact the quality of the runoff coming from the site. The volume of runoff will increase, but it's handled on site. Nothing is being discharged.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question if I may.
Sure. Yes.
In regards to the stormwater runoff, the rear of the property, what is the proximity to the Pascomansay River there?
I'm not sure the distance.
It would appear from just what you've submitted that it's very close.
Might be able to roughly scale it. So this is five hundred feet. It's probably a thousand feet, maybe a little bit less from the rear of the property to the river.
Okay. Is that gonna, excuse me, is that gonna impact anything?
They're not discharging directly to the river. It's going into the, well, I mean, we'll have to, it's being treated. I mean, I'm, I understand this completely because I'm in the business, but for people that do, right. I mean, it, it was a concern because this is same we had with the KFC, if you remember. So it's the same kind of the day, another applicant not too long ago, the corner of Tucker Road and, uh, Route Six, they came with the KFC proposal a couple of years ago, maybe? I can't remember. And what, I mean, the traffic was a concern, one of the concerns, but also the lot coverage was another concern. And I remember at that time, we had one of the selectmen come to the hearing and say, you know, this is an overreach or whatever. So I'm, as far as drainage and stormwater, I understand this because I'm in the business, you know, I understand how stormwater works and how you're managing, how you're mitigating the, the impact of the stormwater and the volume and all that. So, uh, you know, I, I can probably say that maybe it's not gonna be the, uh, an adverse effect directly on the river if the runoff is being treated. But again, it all depends on the maintenance of those things too. Like my concern is because the original variance that was granted back in two thousand and six and I remember, I, I wasn't at the board at that time, but at that time it wasn't the board, I think it was, maybe it was the, it was the building inspector or the zoning officer who was in charge of these stormwater management
The inspection reports.
Devices inspection that were, but not, I mean, not directly, the, you're supposed to hire to have an inspection yearly by a professional engineer and send a report and findings to the, and, and again, he said, he hasn't seen anything, so I don't know if this has been ever serviced or maintained, you know, so
Correct.
Those are the things too, like even, you can put the best technology, but if you don't serve it, you don't service it or you don't maintain it, it may be an issue, you know, but those things usually they inspect once or twice a year, you know.
It's really bothersome to me that they don't bother to even follow the variance that was granted
Right, that's another issue too, right.
You know, in two thousand and seven.
Right.
And how did, how did it go from they were not to go above twenty-four-point-five, they're up to thirty-point-nine? How did that happen?
I, I really don't
Now, I have a couple of questions. How many parking spaces are there right now?
So existing. Now there are, I don't have the total, five, fifteen, twenty spaces total right now.
And you want to increase it to how many?
And it is going to Thirty.
So the total's gonna be thirty?
Yes, total space is thirty.
Okay, so the increase is ten parking spaces.
Correct.
You're going from twenty to thirty?
Correct.
The, I mean, I know probably Mr. Duhart is more, I don't know if you had a chance to meet with him or, uh, from DPW, he's probably the one that looked at the lot covers calculations most likely. I mean, he seems, it seems that he thinks there's some discrepancies. Again, I'm not, I haven't looked at the calc, so I'm not doing that, you know, but you might wanna reach
Yeah, I did talk to the building inspector specifically about the, he had mentioned that the coverages didn't match the previous decision. He's the one who brought it to light to me.
Right. In addition, I think what you show on the plan seems to be slightly less than what's actually, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not
We did make a revision to the coverages after it was brought up from the building inspector. I discussed it with him. So I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly the numbers you had said from Mr. Duhart, but our existing shown now is thirty-point-nine and that's with the credit that you're allowed for the roof infiltration.
Okay, I think he had thirty-three-point-eight, uh, actual thirty-three-point-eight. So you did go with the thirty-point-nine and your proposal is forty-three-point-two?
Forty-three-point-two.
That what you showed on the plan?
Yep, and that's with the credit for
Right, but I think he's saying it's forty-nine-point-two, actual.
Actual.
Yeah, with the credit. So there's some kind of, so with the credit. So you're almost at fifty percent. That's, that's the alarming number. I think that's what
Sure.
You know, again, that's what the, the comments from
Engineering.
DPW and from the Board of Health, yeah.
So previously, our numbers were higher and I'm not sure if that's what Mr. Duhart is looking at because we hadn't taken credit for the roof infiltration.
I see.
And we also had included some area that is used for a handicap ramp and some steps and it specifically says that you are to exclude those areas from the impervious coverage.
Handicap ramps?
Handicap ramp, yeah.
I'm not sure, okay. Even if it's concrete?
It's not concrete.
Oh, it's
So it's not, it's not a sidewalk ramp. It's a ramp up into the building.
Is it a decking? If it's open decking, you
It is, it's
Oh, it's, it's, you need to come up to the podium and, and state your name for the records, please, if you need to speak. If you need to speak, you need to come up to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Dennis Almeida. It is composite decking with a pressure-treated structure
Okay.
For the handicap ramp.
Composite, and you have the spacing in between the, the decking?
Yes.
Okay, so it would infiltrate in the ground?
Yes, and underneath
I think in this case, you, you, you'll be able to deduct the, the impervious coverage on that. But it seems to be some kind of discrepancies here and we, we don't wanna get involved in this at this time, but what's the general feeling of, of the board, you know, with seeing the comments from engineering and from the Board of Health? I mean, I, and like you said, the history of the, you know, with the, with being in
The other, the other part that bothers me is that in two thousand and seven, when this was updated and approved, for some reason, the board said no office space there and no principal business at that particular, and I don't know why.
I don't either, but that's why they're here for this. So now, you know, so it's not, I'm not sure why. Because you, an office use is allowed use as of right, I would think in the general business anyways. Yeah, I'm not sure why. I, I was trying to, I didn't have the previous application, the two thousand and five.
And what the, the minutes of that meeting and that might provide some
I did, it didn't say, yeah, I, we looked at the two thousand and seven, I looked at the two thousand and seven minutes.
I'm not saying the decision, but I'm saying the minutes, the actual minutes.
I'd only be speculating, obviously, but just from the number of existing spaces, it may have been because of that, because if you have additional use with the office space, then they're not gonna meet the parking requirements. I'm not sure if that may have been a reason.
Could be because they asked for a variance on the lot coverage, so, but Well
The paragraph closes by saying they are doing this just so as not to increase the intensity of use of the lot or the threat to the aquifer. So they were concerned about
The aquifer back then, right, right.
And one of the things I'm also concerned about is traffic. I mean, you're two buildings down from Route Six. Did you do a traffic study?
Uh, we did not and namely because it's a, it's not a large office space or yoga studio.
But you're, you're, you're asking for thirty parking spaces, right?
No, no, he has twenty though. He has twenty.
Ten, ten additional, yeah.
I, I agree, traffic is not with that size
With the volume that you have on Route Six already, it would be a
And most of that traffic is from people like yoga class would be somebody who lives around the area that's gonna go there. It's not like people's gonna drive from another town to come to it, you know.
The traffic, yeah, I believe is, is coming to and from work as well and it, it is, depending upon the time of day, it's terrible, absolutely terrible. People are trying to get into the restaurant down at Route Six, they're trying to get into the building prior to that.
Well, yeah, so
It's tough.
Right, so this is a special permit, you know, the criteria for a special permit, if this is more detrimental of the existing now, do you think this is more detrimental to the aquifer because of the increase? That's, that's what
Relying on what the, 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 uh, Board of Health said, I think the answer to that question is yes, I think it is more detrimental.
Okay, so that's, that's what we, Bob, is that how you feel too?
I'm not thrilled.
So I, I understand that viewpoint, the opinion of that. I just, I'll, I'll say kind of the same thing that I said before. The stormwater controls that we are implementing here are specifically designed to not produce the stormwater quality versus pre-development. So the volume will increase, yes, and I know that's concerning just off face, but we are controlling that on site. There's no discharge, it's all being infiltrated and that's everything up to the hundred-year storm, which is over seven inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period.
Have you done the soil analysis? Do you have any soil data?
Uh, yeah, I believe we did.
Well, you have it on the plan? I haven't looked at it.
I believe so, should be on the detailed sheet.
The soil type, groundwater, is groundwater, how high is groundwater there?
So I know we're providing two feet from the bottom
Two feet separation?
Correct. And I believe we did
I think you need three, right?
No, it's two, two-foot minimum. It's four feet.
Well, three, you need to do
Mounding.
Mounding analysis.
Yep, and I believe we did that.
Oh, okay.
If we were less than four, we certainly did the mounding analysis. I think there's a lot of details here.
You know what type of soils?
It is sandy soils.
Uh huh, so you got a good perk.
Sorry. I'm actually not seeing them on here. Cause we do have them shown on the plan.
But you don't have the data.
We must have the details on here somewhere, we always do. But I know we took into account where the water table was. We provided the minimum two-foot separation with mounding analysis. I believe from what I remember, it was sandy soil in the area. Maybe we didn't have them on the plan. If we need a revision, we can certainly add those.
Any questions from the board members, any concerns, any feedback, any input how we wanna proceed with this?
Me, I think I'd like to hear what Mr. Michaud says with regard to the property. I don't know that he has heard or seen their plan on how they intend to deal with the water at the site. Have you been to the, to that, to the Board of Health?
Board of Health, I have not spoken to anyone at Board of Health.
He sends a letter which he's not happy with your project.
I think there was an attachment with that too, that, that had something to do with the stormwater, if I'm not
I'm not sure he, that was uploaded to the online portal because I don't remember seeing the letter from them. Maybe we just missed it somehow.
I don't know, maybe
Cause we had received
Michelle could send you
We had received several comments from other boards, I think. I don't remember seeing that one.
I mean, the stormwater, the technical aspects of the stormwater, I think that could be dealt with the DPW in terms of the volume and what they need to do and all that. The, the, the larger picture is whether you feel that the forty-nine percent on this lot is an overreach or not, you know, for, for this lot because given the, the precedence or not the precedence, but given that the other cases that we had before with the KFC too and, but KFC is a different kinda, it's a fast food facility, it's not this similar to this type of facility, this is, they're not going to generate
I personally think the forty-nine percent is too, too much.
I agree.
And at least for now, I think we, we need to, you need to contact the building commissioner on the side and then whatever, you need to have an inspection of that system.
So we did go out and do one, actually.
Okay, and say, you know, just to get a, send them a report to say what's the status, if it's been clean, is it functioning as
Yeah, and what was the date on his letter? Cause I had talked to him and I'm pretty sure I sent
May seventeenth?
Okay, um, yeah, we did the inspection on April twenty-fourth. I don't know, maybe he didn't get it.
That was before. It said, May seventeen?
Right.
So why would you have it in April? Prior to the letter. Yeah, the build, the comments from the building department.
Yes. Yeah, cause we did go out and do an inspection, I wrote up a report. And I thought we had sent it to him, I, I can send it to him, make sure.
Okay, that's, that's the first step. The second, I'm not sure how we're gonna deal with the, with the thirty-point-nine or the twenty-four-point-five, whatever, you know, so I mean, it's, it's not in compliance with, with the zoning conditions, but this is not up to us, that's the zoning officer, a zoning enforcement officer. But for this particular But for this particular case, we're, we're looking at the increase in, from the 30, 30.9, was it, the numbers, I don't know. Yeah, to the 43, I think, and they seem not to agree with your numbers for some reason, so I'm not sure. You might want to reach to, reach out to Paul and talk to Paul.
And that might have been confusion based on how we...
So that's the concern, I think the general concern of the board here is the increase in the lot coverage.
Yep.
You know, so, I'm not sure how you want to proceed with that, did you want them to go back and see what they can do to maybe...
It's up to them, it's up to them to decide.
No, right, but, I mean, would that be, or you want, you know, just have them, we'll ask if he wants us to vote on this tonight, and I don't know, is...
If he can, if he can somehow cure that, I mean, I, I would feel much better about...
Yeah, if we can speak to DPW and Board of Health and get on the same page and see if they can, if we can come up with a solution.
Ask me personally, I don't know about you, Al, but...
No, no, I, I mean, if you can come up with a solution, then...
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And I, I think the yoga, maybe the yoga peak or the yoga might be different than offices, I don't know if yoga classes are offered in the afternoon or at night or early in the morning, is this something, because we usually... You, you might want to share parking, if this, you know, like, you know, offices might be until 5 o'clock, yoga classes at 7 or something, people go to yoga after work or before they go to work early in the morning. That would help you minimizing your parking spaces, which helps you minimizing your lot coverage. So I think...
Yeah, we could put some more thought into that.
Right, if you want to do that, so, if we, we can, we can, we can probably continue the hearing, right, to allow them to do some more...
If he can cure it, if he can cure that, that's...
Yeah, and maybe have the, talk to Paul.
Yep.
And make sure you talk to the director of the Board of Health, too, to explain what you're doing with your system. I understand the nitrogen, I agree, it's all from sewer, not from, you know, from the waste, it's not, and again, you know, did you submit the drainage report with this?
Yes.
Okay. Did you address the standards of the, or you didn't have to do the...
Yeah, we did.
Okay, and that's submitted with the application?
Correct.
And it was being reviewed by the DPW or engineering?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's your best bet. Work with engineering.
Make sure they're comfortable with how we're doing our treatment.
Make sure you, you show them your test bits, make sure you have the separation, make sure it's the perk, as you said, it's sandy, it's going to work, and then...
See if you can get away from 49% coverage.
Yeah, I mean, be...
It's actually 43.2, I just want to get that clarified. Is it 43.2 or is it...
So it, the, there's a difference, there's two different numbers, because there's an actual coverage, what's actually on the ground, and then per the zoning by law, you're allowed a credit, so it goes down to the 43, whatever, 43%.
Use the, don't use the, use the number that it's shown that, by zoning, so if you need, if you need to deduct, yeah, but Paul, maybe Paul seems to think that your numbers are not correct, the 43, I don't know.
And it might have been our previous plan, too, because we had our numbers higher.
Maybe, that's, yeah, I mean, that could be, you know, I, we really, just make sure you're all on the same page.
Yep.
So when the numbers come to us, there's no discrepancies or different opinions in the numbers, you know, so it's not, I guess that, that would help, right?
Yes.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
How much time do you think you need to do this?
Well, they need probably a month, right?
They will get on to that end of August.
What's the next meeting, July, July 24th, is that July 24th? That's full, right?
Yeah, we're full.
Okay, how about the next one after?
We're full on 7th of August.
7th, how many cases?
I think four right now.
Four? What's the one after the 7th?
21st of August.
21st, well...
Yeah, if that's the soonest we can get on, then...
Yeah, that's, I mean, that gives you time, too, to...
Right, that's plenty of time.
Yeah, yeah, revise your plans, revise your calc.
August what?
21.
August 21st. So, Dr. Agay?
I'm not so sure if the traffic issue has been dealt with, because he did have the same problem with KFC that was going to go right at the corner.
Right.
The police department also is, and all of these issues that make costs of difficulties in future. If this, if they spread the time of the work at a time, if the traffic is less, maybe the traffic is minimalized.
Right, I mean, how do you, I mean, I don't, I really don't think this size of project warrants a, a traffic study, I, I really don't believe. But if you guys believe that, you can look at, look at the trip generation, just, just say, you know, in offices, so many trips per day, something like that, you know, a drive-through, fast-food restaurant generates a lot of traffic, it's a lot more traffic than this, Dr. Agay, so...
I agree with you, I agree with you, but at the same time, the issue of the public vote is there, traffic is there.
You don't have to spend the money on that, unless there's another way to do that.
No, no, I mean, you can look...
So we can do a very simplistic look at it, look at the trip generation.
Just look at the trip generation for an office or yoga, and say, this is a peak hour of, like, six cars, six trip generation or six, you know...
The state might have available data on how many trips there are typically on Route 6 as well, which you can kind of look at how they compare.
I mean, Route 6 is about 25, 30,000 cars a day, I'm not...
But that's just what I'm saying, it's, it's going to be insignificant compared to the existing traffic.
I know, I'm just looking at the trip generation to the site, not to Route 6. You're not, you're not affecting Route 6.
When you look at trip generation of a site, you want to see how it affects the surrounding area, and it's...
Just, just how many trips per day during peak hour.
Sure.
I'm sure there's not going to be more than six.
Well, at least two trips a day is going to...
Well, we look at peak hours, and...
Be a, a backup of quite a bit, you know, sometimes it's backed up considerably.
Yeah, with the school and, you know, but it's not... Library, I don't know.
If you're trying to get through there, it's very bad.
Yeah, but I, I don't think this is going to add really to the, to the problem. The traffic is there, is there, it's not there. I don't think adding the 10 parking spaces really going to change the level of service on, on Tucker Road or Route 6.
Right.
But again, if you want to just look at the traffic generation, just, I mean, you don't have, just look at the traffic generation book and see how many trips per day, you know, we're not looking for traffic analysis or traffic studies.
Yep.
So, yeah, we understand.
Understood.
Yeah. Again, whatever you can do to minimize the, the lot coverage, that would help. And like I said, look at your business hours peaks, if you can share the parking somehow or whatever, but, you know, because again, they have to go for site point review, too, and if they don't have the parking spaces that they need, they might, you know, have an issue there, too, so. Okay?
Good.
So we need a motion to...
Continue?
Continue to August 21st, is that the, August 21st? Yes.
21st or 25th?
One, 21.
21.
What's that, yeah, we...
Yes, yeah, we would certainly like the continuance.
Do we have a motion to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue case ZSP 24-7 until August 21st, 2024.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see ya. Thank you. Mr. Chair, will we just keep rolling?
No, you can keep rolling.
Okay. Last portion of tonight's meeting is the administration review and approval of administrative minutes of June 5, 2024.
I have...
No comments, any of the board members have any comments?
I have no comments.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes dated June 5, 2024 as written.
Second.
Aye. Last item on the administration agenda is review and approval of minutes of June 5, 2024 variance ZAV 24-5, 10 Bridge Street, and I believe this is for the, the fire station that is coming next, next month. We have none, I have no comments.
I make a motion, Mr.? I make a motion that we approve the minutes of a variance case ZAV-24-5 dated June 5, 2024 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.